We'll call the meeting to order. We'll go by that clock. And Clint won't be with us this evening. He's got a prior commitment, let's say. Vacation is a prior commitment. Would you please stand, face the flag, and join us as we say the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have any additions or deletions on the agenda?
I don't.
Okay. Before we approve it, I would like to move on to the new business section, item four, consideration to approve the purchase of a bus. I know we need to get on the ordering early on here, but I think it's incumbent on us to listen to Clint as the transportation liaison and also ask that the bus, the director of busing for Cannon Falls comes in to tell us what our needs are exactly. So would you please delete number four? And we'll reach out at a subsequent meeting. Anyone else have anything? If not, I would look for the motion to approve the agenda with amendment.
I'll make motion.
Julen on the motion?
I'll second.
Second by Luke. Other discussion? All in favor of the approval of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is this our committee report, Monk? I always have to ask. Does anyone have anything for the cause that they would like? Any committee meetings that they'd like to report on?
You want first? Okay. There was a curriculum meeting that I went to a couple weeks ago now?
Maybe three.
Yeah, three weeks ago, but we haven't had a meeting since. So the elementary through sixth grade are, they're due for reading curriculum update this year. So that is going, you're going to be having something to look at in January, December.
Probably in December.
December?
Yeah.
And then middle school, high school next year is language arts. But the legislation is really like pushing all of the mandates for what they can choose from and where they're at. They are looking at adding the science of reading, which is like a letters training, and they're going to train some staff so that we have a trainer in the building. But yeah, am I missing anything major there?
No, those are the, the red act was the big.
The red act was the big one.
Was the really big thing.
Yeah. So, so yeah.
Okay. Any questions for Katie? Luke, you had something?
Yeah, we, Facilities has met twice, mostly to discuss the survey that went out regarding the outdoor facility projects and what that looks like and what the survey results were and what that tells us as a board and a district and the options we have. And, you know, the needs don't go away, so we still have those needs. The results of the survey kind of told us that we needed to maybe pivot and shift on a few things and maybe, you know, and kind of what the committee decided was to push forward with coming up with ideas and plans of how to go about that, but while doing that significantly reduce the total cost of the project. Through the survey and comments, we think it's still important to move forward and look at some of those things, but also break down the total cost. We've asked ISG to sharpen their pencils on things like blacktop versus concrete, maybe leaving tennis courts where they are and doing half a parking lot, more like green spaces to make it more accessible because through the survey accessibility was something that people felt were important to have better than what we currently have. So, you know, and then concession stands, do we do, instead of building another one, do we do mobile concession stands? Do we use what we have back there and try to bring that number down? We did feel the additional entrance and exit was still important. It was an expensive portion of that, but through feedback thought that the community really wanted to see something done there for safety and accessibility. So as a committee, we felt it was important to still keep the bones of the project and just try to find a way to make it work going forward. So nothing would happen until probably November of next year if we come up with a plan to go to the community for a vote. So it gives us some time to figure out what really those needs are and how to get to a point where, all right, maybe this, the total scope of project has come down and we think it's bearable for our community members. So that's kind of where we're at with that. It was unanimous amongst the committee to try to get to that point. Clinton's not here, but he was there for that meeting and felt the same way. So nothing to vote on or anything, but we just felt it was important to try to fix those needs that aren't going to go away while things are not getting cheaper to, you know, materials and whatnot. So that's it for Facilities.
I think something for me, from my side, to add to that is not only that piece, but also I think we need to keep in mind as a board that we have an operating levy that we have coming up for due. And I guess in my mind, big picture wise of how we could lay this out, and again, it's your guys' decision how you want to do this, and so I'll be looking for some feedback from you guys. I think it's important to, with the new legislation that's passed, May that was passed, boards can, board authorize a renewal of the current operating levy for the next 10 years, which will tack on to the end of the current operating levy, which I believe expires in FY '26. Josh, does that sound about right?
Twenty-five, pay twenty-six.
Twenty-five, pay twenty-six. And so if the board re-ups that at their January meeting this coming January, we can have that out of the way. I do think we need to go out for an increase in that levy. And I think it's important that we do that this coming November. And we can certainly talk about at what level of increase that we can do that at. I would suggest probably taking that to the finance committee to discuss. We have time to do that. Some of the discussion in the facility committee was to marry that bond proposal up on the general election along with the levy increase on the general election because there's no cost to the district for that, and that gives us some time to do some more exploration on that entrance and exit yet with MINDA. So I could see us probably starting discussions in the facility or the finance committee, excuse me, in the next month or two, once we have a finance committee meeting, once the audit is complete, and talking about potential increases for that. So any initial thoughts on just the renewal coming up in January? I know I'm kind of throwing this on you so we don't have to answer tonight, but either November or the December meeting, we should probably make the decision if you want to renew that in January and set that up for that.
I think more talk should revolve around an increase in the levy. And I know procedurally we can move forward with this, just on the renewal, right?
Yeah.
But we have not been able to move up on our undesignated fund balance at all. Correct?
Yeah. Inflation has been hurting a lot.
And I'll incorporate this in with our negotiations. Other negotiations, we would, what I call to be an impasse right now. We will meet again after we get our annual audit information, one more time to discuss, but we may be heading into mediation. And some are in large part is due to our fund balance. Regardless how we may feel individually or collectively about giving pay increases, that certainly is the drive of the educators is to increase their wages. And it doesn't fall on deaf ears, but if we're, if we don't increase that operating levy, then we certainly don't have many places to go. And it's just not a very good time for us right now if we just renew it. We have to look at an increase of some kind and we have to, we have to have that in the same discussion, I think, as a facility discussion and where our priorities are. And we certainly have no use for that field the way it is. So it's a tough one right now. It's decisions that we have to seriously discuss and come to a conclusion on very soon.
So I would just add for Facilities too, we did, from the maintenance department, get a commitment to do some things in that field currently to get it playable again for next year. So we don't have a field that isn't being used and that is.
Like starting in the spring or something?
I would say try and get it playable.
Yeah, right. To try to get it, you know, aerate, hopefully get some.
Gypsum.
Yeah, some temporary water solutions out there, depending on staff levels, to get it to where we can play because we do need a solution there. Obviously with our project, it's being pushed out a little bit, and that's fine, but we are taking it upon us to get that field right or playable, however you want to see it, which I thought was important for immediate type action. So. And then extra curriculum committee did not meet, but we did have lots of discussion around the football team and the fantastic things they're doing and what Friday looks like. And I think all good discussion, trying to come to a solution that works for everybody regarding getting people there, staff and students and parents and whatnot. I think the district has done a lot to try to make that happen. We do have two buses for sure that are going up there. I know Reed had told me they're filling up fast, and those are through generous donations covered outside the cost of five dollars per person for administrative fees and whatnot. So really cool opportunity, great donations from the community. So if you're interested in writing up, get signed up. The links are online.
Mr. Hodge, it is a great dilemma to have to be able to go to the state tournament, but it does create some issues as a principle as far as getting some kids out. How do you typically deal with that?
I'm going to know a lot more. I've asked, I asked parents in my Friday parent newsletter last week to let us know by Wednesday of this week what their plans are with their kids, if they're going to go or not. And when we get a better handle on how many kids are going to be here, then we can kind of plan a little bit better about what the day's going to look like. If it is anything, I'm assuming it's going to be very much like last year with volleyball. We probably had less than 50% of our students here last year. I think we'll probably have even fewer than that for football. And we're looking at Friday will probably be an alternate schedule. We'll probably go down to just having one lunch, you know, half hour before the game, and then we'll stream the game.
Oh, cool.
Cafeteria for the kids and staff that are here so they can watch. But it'll be a, it'll be a different kind of day. I mean, I've already had a lot of staff who've reached out and said, hey, I'm willing to help out here and there, and I can cover things if somebody needs somebody to cover, you know, for an hour or two or combining classes, whatever. So we'll get that part figured out. With that being said, it's a lot easier to do that in my building than it is in the elementary school. The challenges there are just very different than what I deal with in this building, so.
Do we know what Chapi is thinking or what she's working on?
I, as far as I know, she's just planning on running things as normal. So if there are teachers that are gone, they'll have substitutes in their classrooms. My guess is they'll have fewer kids in class on Friday than normal, but I don't really, I don't have any idea how many fewer for her. And for me, it's going to be, you know, like, my guess is the older the kids are, the fewer they'll, you know, the more of them it can drive, the less of them that will be here on Friday. Down to the sixth grade, I'm sure I'll have more sixth graders than anybody else in the building, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that, you know, when we talk about Friday and what that looks like for school, you know, I think for me, the emotional response was, you know, cancel school and let's get as many people there. But the challenges that presents are legitimate, especially in the elementary with, you know, daycare and getting, you know, asking or forcing parents to take a day off of work. That's really tough and real. I wish it could be different, but I do think that those are things that are real and we got to think about, so.
Yep. Thank you. Anyone else on committees?
I have a staff development meeting. We were, they brought up talking about new staff coming into the building, and they were mentioning how much the new staff in our building really liked our building. They found that they had a lot of autonomy in our building, maybe compared to previous buildings that they had been to. So a lot of people really appreciated that, and anytime they were bringing in new ideas and they were very welcomed. And they maybe felt that their other buildings, maybe new ideas were not welcomed. So kudos to our people running the buildings and stuff like that because they appreciated that. They discussed their PLC groups were, felt like they were working really well together, you know, math working with science and so on and so forth, and then utilizing literacy, but across the board, not necessarily like in your language arts class, but let's work on literacy in other aspects of schooling as well, in an effort to really bump up our reading numbers and everything like that and beef those stuff up. So super awesome on that front. And then we talked about utilizing a school forest, but across the board, you know, let's utilize it in art, let's do it in math, let's do it in science, let's do it in reading. Let's, I mean, there's got, there's so many different things that we could do with that school forest over there and to intrigue students and to learn in different aspects and to see different things and just to get them outside and do something different for the day. And so utilize what we have. So I think it was awesome.
Questions? Okay, moving on. Administrative board reports. All of the participants are listed here. They've all got their own narratives here. And Jen is not here tonight, but you can read hers. Tim, anything to add?
No.
Community admin activities. Reed is having a meeting this evening for parents on their upcoming season. Dave has included his. And now we're down to the superintendent.
Yes, I just got a couple of different items. One of them, we've already touched on with the operating and the facility piece. The other one is strategic planning. This is coming up. I sent the parent email out. There'll be social media blast coming out soon. In regards to the two community dates, we will have a staff date also on the first community date, which I believe is November 29th. If staff can't meet that, they're more than welcome to come to one of the community meeting events. Our facilitator is asking that board members kind of refrain from going to those community ones just because they want to have free, open speaking time. And then we'll bring the, all of that information back to an admin meeting, and then we'll present it to the board one night, and you guys can have your two cents as well into the plan before it gets finally passed. So just be aware of that and spread the news and tell people to come. Give their input.
Okay, questions for Jen? Moving on to public input. You see that long narrative there. People have three minutes to speak about things that are of concern to them. And we would ask that if there's multiple people here to speak on the same subject, you have a designated speaker. Sometimes the issues get rediscovered and rediscovered with each speaker. So having said that and looking at the long paragraph of how the game works, is there anybody here that would like to speak to the board in particular about something of concern to the district? Thank you. Moving on. We have no old business. Under new business, consideration to approve an intermittent family medical leave act leave from November 14th, '23 to June 6th, '24.
This is for Lisa Brian, and I recommend approval.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Katie, on the motion. Julen on the second. When we talk about long-term leaves like this, I hate to ask because I know what the outcome is, but what do we do for a sub or subs? We've had a lot of trouble.
It is, the teacher works with the principal on when they may need subs and how long.
Do subs usually come out of the teachers on call or a variety of different? Yes?
If they can, right?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion in the second and on the floor for the approval of the intermittent leave from November 14th to June 6th. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consideration approved staff development plan and budget policy for '25.
Yes, this is for the, whoops. '25 through '26 plan has been approved last year, but this will be the last year for this plan, but the budget for this year is attached here as well. And so we'll be looking for approval for that plan for this fiscal. And it follows policy for '25 for this year.
Anything to add, Julen? This is your area. No?
No, not at the moment, no.
Per statute, we two present the district budget post staff development.
Yes.
Janed revenue.
Janed revenue.
Yeah.
Not all told, just. It's a two percent, so I'd say.
You have a motion to approve the staff development plan and budget.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Katie, on the motion?
I'll second.
Second by Brian. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is Carrie. Consideration approved the recommendation from the CFEA to move to Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing as our insurance broker effective January 1 of '24.
There was a process that the district used in working with the largest local bargaining unit, which is by statute, and that obviously is the teachers. And so we had teachers involved with this process through understanding that they would go out for bids, bid opening, review of the bids, and then picking a contractor, which was, ended up being Sourcewell.
Josh, you're involved with all of this? No? Yes?
Yeah, depends where you're asking.
Do we do this annually or every other year or?
Every two, every two years.
We are talking about, CFEA moved to Sourcewell, we're talking about health benefits or?
Yep, health, health insurance, health premiums.
Which has grown astronomically over the last couple of years. Looking for an approval of the recommendation from CFEA.
I'll make approval.
Julen on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Luke. Other discussion? All in favor of the approval of the recommendation for Sourcewell? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're not dealing with the buses at this point in time. If you, if you want to look at the information, what's coming up next at the November 27th meeting, among the things we'll be looking at is the audit presentation and approval of the audit at our next meeting, several other items, discussion on school calendar, final levy certification and proof of taxation, and world's best workforce plan document. And anything else that you'd like to bring up to the board collectively, please reach out to either Jeff or Lori, and we can see if we can get it on the board agenda if so needed, I guess. Okay, having said that, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I had one quick thing, real quick. When we were talking about the levy stuff and like operating costs, before we get to that point where we want to have that discussion, are we able to see maybe what other schools are size, maybe?
Yeah, I think that's, that's going to be part of that informational process that'll probably start in finance and then come to the board level saying, here's what other schools are at currently.
Okay, perfect.
And then you'll, we'll also have the for discussion tax impacts. So, I mean, we can get numbers right now, but we'll have to wait until probably August to get the most local or the most recent tax impacts of what an operating levy would be. But yeah, all of that information will be made available.
Sounds good.
So.
Hi, guys, you're just.
I have one other question. Are we going to have a board rep, a school student rep?
Do we have a student rep?
I kind of let that one slip. So I will make sure that we, that is student rep.
Say, fellows, your, your timing is absolutely terrible. We will be, we will be adjourning momentarily. Is there anything we can help you with? And by the way, congratulations to your football team.
Yeah.
And everything here. We're proud of you as a, as a school, as a community. And anything you'd like to contribute? Just here to see us? Anybody in the back there wish to speak?
Yeah, speech.
Oh, they have a speech.
Esteemed members of the school board, this Friday, November 17th, is a momentous occasion earned through hard work, determination, sacrifice. Many plan to, and many are coming to support our football team at US Bank. I'm requesting that Friday, November 17th, be turned into an online learning day at Cannon Falls High School. A large population of the student body plans to attend that event, and a large portion of the staff wish to attend. Eighty-three percent wanting to attend. There are simply not enough substitutes to cover eighty-three percent of the staff who wish to attend this event. An online learning day would allow academic productivity to continue. A day off would require students to catch up when they have to return on Monday. For such a large amount of students, teachers would likely spend Monday catching everyone else up, and if school were to be in-person, productivity would be low between students and staff. There is no loss in a school calendar day by taking online learning. In my eyes and the eyes of my constituents, the elementary school is a separate entity in this regard. They have activity days for themselves that the high school and middle school do not participate in, which is okay, and they are separate entities. The high school should be able to have days for just the middle school and high school in the event of activities making it to state. Another question arises of all equity to all activities. We cannot solve the past inequities, but we can establish traditions and values that honor each activity that earns its spot in the state competition. Further deliberation can decide how we can honor those activities with an online learning day. Occasions similar to these do not occur frequently nor on a whim. Change, change has already been occurring. We have established new traditions with states and values of equity between all activities. An online learning day would be a great compromise for all activities while honoring the activity and equity between them. Academic productivity is still being achieved as students can work on what they need to when they have time after set the set activity. The school already sponsors ways to get to the event, so the school should allow an online learning day for the state event and future state events. Many wish to go. We can establish equity from here on out, and academic productivity can stay increased with the introduction of online learning days for such events. I call upon you, the student body calls upon you, the community calls upon you. Please consider making this Friday, November 17th, into an online learning day for the high school and for future state events.
You guys, I think it's awesome that you guys came in here and did this. I think it's awesome. Props to you guys, seriously.
Unfortunately, the conversation has taken place already, and we have, we have discussed that already. And we will go on Friday as business as usual. And I do appreciate, we all appreciate you coming in and stating that. Corb, I didn't know you had it in you. But somebody else wrote that, didn't they?
No, it was my editor. I wrote the rough draft. I got words in there.
Again, our congratulations to you.
Yes.
And the team for representing our community. And as we've all watched you, your sportsmanship, not only you win and win the majority of your games, but your sportsmanship when playing other teams is unbelievable. So congratulations to you. We won't be able to. We won't be able to follow through, but we heard you. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
Good. But the, that's maturity thing, they need to come out and make that.
That was awesome for them, I like that.
So I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make motion.
Julen on the motion, seconded by?
I'll second.
Luke? Other discussion? All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are finished, thank you.